All right, we're going to call the meeting to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance in a moment of silence and observance of all military past and present.
United States of America, we are the republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisms of liberty and justice for all.
Madam Deputy Player, please do roll call.
Eric Reynolds.
Here.
Handen.
Here.
Stacy Wells.
Here.
Christine Taylor.
Here.
Tim Brenner.
Anna.
And Rachel Stanki.
Here. Staff members this evening, it's like Benny, thank you for joining us, and I think that's the words, staff members, committee members here. Um, we'll move on with the approval of the VOT meeting minutes from October seventh, twenty twenty five. Make a motion to accept the VOT meeting, October seventh, twenty twenty five. I'll second. All in favor of the approval of the minutes, March number seven, twenty five, please say aye. Okay, I'll oppose, say nay. Motion carried. Um, additions to the agenda this evening? I have one. Uh, I forgot to add it on here as a, um, player authority, uh, alternate.
What do you want to put it, you know?
That is the end. Player Authority Alter. All in favor of the addition to the agenda, say aye. Aye, I'll oppose, say nay. Aye. Motion carries. Four one. All the members this evening, please, um, agenda items only.
Is there no matter chairman?
All right, we will move on to no presentation, no correspondence, uh, well, a little bit, I guess, I just wanted to present our supervisors' report applicants for code enforcement. We're still seeking applications from that. Just letting the board know, we've had a couple people that's been interested, but not received their applicant, they reached out by phone. Um, Halloween three, um, the township did a great job with that. I just want to thank everyone who volunteered their time, helped with that, attended. Um, it was an amazing community event, and I hope that continue to grow. Um, to treasurer's report?
Okay, our general fund has two million one hundred seventeen thousand, three hundred and forty eight dollars and five cents. Our Michigan class is doing very well. I just got a statement in the mail, I wanted to bring to the board's attention for the choice one CD for the sewer. There's a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars on that. And I was mistaken when I said it was up in twenty twenty six, it's up in twenty twenty five. So I have ten days from October thirty first to pull the money out. Yeah, it's only receiving one point five percent. In the machine class, it's four point one percent. So I want to pull that CD out and just put it in the Michigan class.
Yep.
Um, Michigan class is doing very well. We got eighty three thousand, two hundred forty two ninety one so far interest. And I just want to let all the residents know, the first week in December, you will be getting your tax bills. They do go to mortgage companies. So if you have a mortgage, you will not receive a bill in the mail. It goes to your mortgage company. So if you don't have a mortgage, you don't receive a bill. Please contact the treasurer's office.
Players report?
Oh, saying working on bills. Daring people, taking care of the cemetery.
Approval of the bills?
I'm going to approve the bills.
Of the fourth act? Do a roll call on that, Madam Deputy?
Eric?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Stacy?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Rachel?
Yeah. Motion carried, five zero. What about the committee report, starting with the senior center? Um, I'll go ahead and read it real quick. On duplicate, on duplicate, it counts for October first, twenty five through October thirty first, so two hundred and fifty one seniors. Michigan State Police Prevention Services will be at the center on Wednesday, December tenth, at one PM for a Sams and Personal Protection presentation. The fourth quarter MTA check for mileage reimbursement with three thousand ninety two dollars and thirty two cents will be used in some to help our life fortunate seniors that have been affected by loss of SNAP benefits during the holiday season. Hannah Lanta, a local barber, is offering her services for haircut right here at the center. Acquisitions are available on Wednesdays between eleven thirty and one thirty PM. We have started a rapids club. We will take our bus once per month to a local restaurant. Registration for Senior Winter Games will open November tenth through January eighth, twenty twenty six. Our annual Christmas celebration is set for Friday, December nineteenth at noon. The cost is ten dollars and will include a catered luncheon and entertainment by Miss Paisley Trace. The luncheon is being sponsored by Living Water, fueling consistent living. We are requesting permission to close the senior center on Friday, December twenty sixth. As of November third, eleven senior centers are closing on Friday, December twenty sixth, and six are also closing on January second, twenty twenty six. We will use vacation or sick time. I will make a motion while we're discussing this, um, to quote, let's, to allow the senior center to both Friday, December twenty sixth.
Support in providing this or using.
Their side of vacation time.
Support.
Okay, um, all in favor, say aye. Aye, I'll oppose, say nay. Motion carried. Move to fire authority?
Yes. The, uh, our prober, uh, report. Uh, the fire, the emergency, uh, department, we saw the hundred and seventeen smoke alarms to date. Uh, we did, uh, we started, we cyclone replaced a bunker here, uh, so many every year, we just replaced three sets, which is just the coats and pants, but I just want everyone to understand those are thirty nine hundred piece. Um, we had a, a repair on engine eleven, that was thirty eight hundred dollars. But the main thing I wanted to talk about was the, uh, I just want to cover kind of quick is that um, in two, two thousand twenty four, we had two hundred and twenty one runs, and so far, we're at three hundred and twelve runs. Um, so, actually, they did a nice, yeah, compelling information as to why is that? And so I'm just going to briefly show you what, uh, building fires were up, uh, power lines down. We get called on those, um, and just a side note of being called on any kind of sparking or fire. Um, we finally got consumers and the power companies on board. So when they do immediate cost recoveries, whatever cost, it's plus two out there, security area, they recover our costs. Um, assist the police of other agencies, that's a, um, and then this is a kind of a unusual one, the authorized, people are, uh, authorized controlled burning. So someone's got a, someone gets a little burn, they call the burn line, their neighbor calls in, we send a truck out, they cancel the truck. We still pay our guys because they went out on the call. That is all. Uh, it's, yeah, oh, and also, uh, no incident found. We get a call for a fire, they go out there, there's nothing there. So I just, I'm emphasizing where those come from, and the only reason I'm doing that is because, you know, we allow so much in our funding for budget for, uh, for manpower and labor. And if that continues, you'll be stretching the edges there a little bit, so. But anyways, uh, and the final, final part is cost recovery to date, though, uh, we've recouped forty, forty three thousand and seven dollars. And the majority of that came from, uh, the power companies and, uh, and vehicle fires, so.
Um, Todd, anything on planning?
Oh, sorry, I'm sorry again.
Went right by you, didn't you?
Did, I don't know why. I'm going to start at the library, because you missed that one on the agenda too. They, um, they made two thousand dollars at the book sale, the visitors did, and there's wood rack over the door in a building. And they paid three hundred and eighty five dollars for HVAC repair. It was a capacitor, and the only capacitor I know is a flux capacitor, and just back to the future. So I don't know what they were talking about.
Okay.
And the parks. We had our zombie walk, and I saved the newspaper articles, if anybody's interested, should I show them to you? There's one for each year. This is this year, and the one on the back was last year. And the kind, our next meeting was kind of a review of the zombie walk. And we decided we're going to need new trophies for next year because the big one, actually, it got broken by a kid hyped up on sugar. He knocked over the table and it went flying, I guess. But we're only going to do two next year, next time. There's one for the business and one for the families. Um, and one, one family who came felt that the art event was more organizing, grand lights. I thought that was nice. And the food truck was there, he only had made four hundred dollars, but he had a blast, and he's looking forward to coming back again. And then, uh, Josh, he walked around the park the next day, and he only found four candy wrappers. Um, people were taking a lot of pictures with the new banners we had out, so that we're thinking about setting up some bales of hay and pumpkins to make a picture area. And we had thirteen thousand sixty five ropes from the kids that they stopped at seven thirty, and the kids were still coming through at eight thirty. So then we talked about extending the time next year. We had twenty four trunks, and we have space for twenty eight. And we need somebody to walk around and check on things throughout the event. The donors insiders had less visibility because the, the banners weren't lit, they're talking about maybe solar lights or clip-on lights for them. And they said that this event took sixty two percent of the budget, and we need to have some donors because, but, because we need to have more money, especially if we want to provide more tangible items like the park bench that they gave to us. Eric? It's in the garage still?
About to end.
Yeah. Um, and there, then our next meeting is until February. And we're, we're talking also about, um, writing into the bylaws in if an organization wants to withdraw from parks and, and they're going to talk about that in February.
Um,
Oh, I was just going to ask, um, if we, are we soliciting some of the local businesses?
We're, we're going to try Walmart, and I guess the Rotary gave them five hundred dollars too, so they will solicit from businesses.
I wonder, uh, can, can, can they solicit the Downtown Development Authority of Vienna, or is that because it's in the city? Would that not be?
Because the Rotary gave them money, so.
Yeah, I would definitely check with them, you know, Joe Risk there, Vienna.
Um, and you want to say though, Janice does a wonderful job on our Parks and Rec Committee, um, now that I can hang out with her a little bit. Um, you guys do do a phenomenal job on that. If you guys did not make it down to the Clive Park and Rec for that zombie walk, it has grown dramatically from, I bet, I was in, but yeah. I was there the very first year they did it, and maybe a hundred, two hundred people, and it's well over a thousand, almost two thousand people that show up to that event, so it is, it is coming downhill. Yes.
It is, that's where they do the zombie walk, they come down the parking, from the parking lot down the main aisle there, and it's very cool watching them come down.
It is, it's awesome, and it's very organized, and yeah, there's a lot of time that goes into it, so if you guys get to experience it next year, I encourage you to go out to it. And Janice, keep up the good work on the floor, it's, you know, you do a great job. Uh, Kevin? And, and I, I know we're going to discuss solar, you're probably going to give us an update, but can I, can I give you one comment before you start? That's coming up, coming up. I just wanted to relieve your mind a little bit and let you know, and the board know, that Attorney Dilner did send me the response, it has been sent out, yeah. And a motion to intervene app was completed on that. There was three different documents sent, an entry of appearance could send to intervene, and then the proof of service of the petition, just so, you know.
He sent quite a letter, I read it tonight, it's, I already posted on the e-doc, it's, uh,
Rachel.
I, I like to think that, uh, you and I got him rocking a little bit, Friday. And he, he went in and really gave it to him, like, uh, on his, uh, statement, but, uh, with that being said, I, planning doesn't have meetings scheduled for November. We didn't have one scheduled because of deer season, so our next meeting isn't until, uh, December eleventh, I believe. Uh, if we have any new business. So far, we don't have any new business coming either, so. Uh, but we probably will have by then, uh, at least discuss some solar stuff. The, uh, regarding solar, you know, the, uh, pre-hearing is, uh, Monday, that, in the tenth at nine o'clock. I'd like to get the board's authorization to set up, uh, the TV screens in here and have a screening, uh, sign in at nine o'clock. Uh, AMB's agreed to come in and run the video. And our boss is willing to allow her to slide over here for an hour and, and set it up, and, uh, we'll just invite the public to come in if they want to watch the hearing here. We can put it on both screens, uh. And I've already got the, uh, meeting criteria sent to me, so, to log in with.
Yes.
So we're, we're all set there, and just for what it's worth, I don't know if we can, I don't know if we can comment, but, uh, at least I'd like to see it, and this gives the, some of the residents a chance, because this last two weeks, everybody's caught off guard, never heard of solar, didn't know it was coming, got these letters, it's been man help, according to the gals in the office and stuff here too, so, you know. You know, uh, the Facebook page is all blew up all of a sudden, everybody's got these notices. But, uh, hopefully, we're going to get past that, so. But if, if you don't have a problem with it, and the senior center's not using the hall at nine o'clock
They're not.
Monday morning, so we, we did check on that, and.
No objection?
What, what did you call that, Kevin, or what?
It's a pre-hearing, uh, I really don't know what they're.
Why did you call meeting in the hall here?
Oh, I, I would just, uh,
Watch party?
Watch party, yeah, if you want to call it that, bring your, bring your own coffee and a bottle of water.
I'm fine with that. We can, we can make a motion right now, make a motion, uh, that we, uh, open the hall for Kevin to do a, a watch party on solar.
What, what's the date again?
Monday.
That's time for the morning.
Nine AM on the tenth, Monday the tenth.
Monday the tenth.
Starts at nine, and it looks like on their e-doc that schedule, they only allotted an hour, so I don't know. And I don't know what it's going to be comprised of, it's, uh, yeah, I, I assume it's supposed to be where they finally decide that the application is complete, however, as of today, it doesn't look like EDF's application is even complete, so that hearing may not take place, it may get canceled. But, you know, fingers crossed, we did discuss it, uh, at the conference on Friday, that, uh, if they did cancel the hearing, then EDF has to send out notices and, uh, letters all over again for a new hearing.
So we have an update, the board on that, just a heads up. So I had Kevin in on a call with the state of Michigan regarding the solar. Um, for questions that kind of, Kevin did a amazing job, I just thank Kevin, if you guys want anyone to have your back, I'm sorry, but this man is digging deep into solar, and we are fighting with everything we have, and Kevin is asking all the right questions and stuffing this thing. It was very impressive on Kevin's heart, so thank you, Kevin, for that. But if you want to elaborate more in detail, I just want the board to give a heads up of how that went, because it was impressive.
Pretty much, I just went right with their playbook that they designed to, uh, how to do PA two thirty three, and, uh, caught him in several inconsistencies in their book that they could not answer the questions. So it was, uh, I would love to get a transcript of that, but I would love to have.
It was, it would be nice.
So I couldn't watch the faces, Rachel had to watch the face of the guy.
That lady was trying to talk in circles, she didn't know how to handle Kevin, for sure. I'd say about ten, twelve people on that call with Kevin.
We were outnumbered, yeah.
We were definitely outnumbered, and we had, I had a spotlight of.
We had people from, uh, from Lyra, from the AG's office, and from MPSC, and, yeah, they, they pulled out all the stops ready to, to get us, and no, it, it didn't happen.
Kevin came prepared as usual.
Anyway, yeah, as long as we have no problem having a watch, we'll start with that and then see where things go from there.
Okay, all in favor of the motion to open the hall up for watch party, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, I'll oppose, say nay. Motion carried.
Thank you, we'll be here Monday morning.
For all your hard work, thank you. Um, so we're going to do business. Um, renewal for ninety two seventy North Saginaw Road? I'm sorry, make a motion to renew ninety two seventy North Saginaw Road Ethic Farm LLC Grower Class C recreational AU GC zero zero one zero eight one.
Support.
For discussion.
I just see, um, and I already asked this question, but I'm going to ask it in the meeting as well, uh, is all their paperwork in order and all their fees paid?
I mean.
Any other discussion? Roll call on that, please.
Yes.
Dan?
Yeah.
Stacy?
Yes.
Chris?
Yeah.
Rachel?
Yes, motion carried, five zero. And we'll move on to the senior center, Consumers Energy. So from my understanding, we have to replace the meter over at the senior center. Um, so this is the quote that consumers gave us. I'll make a motion to pay four thousand six hundred and sixty nine dollars and twenty three cents to replace the meter at the senior center. I'll second.
So, and, um, my question is, and I was looking at this and that, and I'm referring to this drawing right here. It appears, which I expected, that they're going to re, put a larger gas line in.
Yes.
Which means, I thought this cost was pretty observant, but, observant, ah, that's not right, is it? Yeah, that, but, um, I see now that to do that, they're going to have to go under center road. See, as you can see, there, the meter, they're changing from, uh, according to this drawing, from a five-eighths line to an inch and an eighth line. But I didn't realize that the gas line's on this side of the road. So they're going to go across, under the road, so when you think that they got to go under the road, make the connection on this side, it's not as bad as I thought it was, okay? But it appears if I'm not reading that right, that's what it looks like to me.
That's exactly, it's metallic.
And that pictures, what do those pictures go to?
It's something that you sent us there on desk.
That's kind of, that's true up there, that's some apartment complex, I don't know what that is. Multiple gas meters.
I don't remember. They got.
Yeah, somebody sent us the wrong picture up there. But, but this one is right, you know, with the, it's got the right address on it, and it has, shows the right proximity there, so. Anyways, that'll go make, this is my question, is it, or my concern, or not really my concern, is why was it so much? But now I see why, because they're going to bring in a lot bigger line, which, I'm shocked, you know, we upgraded the generator size. We really, that's a, that's a pretty huge line, inch and an eighth, yes, so.
Maybe we think we need it.
Very much. We started a little bit. Anyways, I'm done.
Yep, um, the way, roll call. Sorry, roll call on that, please. Eric?
Yes.
John?
Here.
Stacy?
Yes.
Chris?
Yeah.
Rachel?
Yeah. Motion carried, thank you, Tom. Um, senior center estimate for a metal door, now April did tell me that she would get another estimate, but we have settled with, um, JCL, and our garage doors back here, our metal door back here, JCL's been taking care of us on all of our doors so far, so I think I would try to bring just this one fault to the board first. And see what areas and stuff, where if you want additional, I can never get additional, but we always need to revert back to JCL, and they're carrying, they've been carrying us. Yeah, so I'm going to make a motion to accept the bid for four thousand nine hundred and thirty three dollars and sixty four cents to replace the hell out, metal door on the north side.
That's just money walk, oh.
And on the south side of the senior center.
I think both doors are on the south side.
Yeah, north shore, south door.
Yeah, well, yeah.
It's like they're both on the south.
Yeah, they're both on the south sides, but.
I'll second that.
But I, I did, I did actually go over to the senior center today, and I did look at both doors, uh, mentioned today. And they could use a, you know, an upgrade. In fact, the they're not really, the current doors that are currently there, they're not really designed for that much track. That's not really a commercial door, per se, so, uh, for not to that much track, anyway.
Aren't those doors on the west side of the building, the back of it?
You, you are correct, they are the west side of the building. You are right.
Northeast, west, south.
You're on the building, right? I do have one man, chairman.
Yes.
For me, though, um, I'm going to go, have to go north, and the reason is, um, if, if the township out of our general fund is paying for this, in which I assume we are, I'd like to put the money towards the roof. Because I think the both roof is more important than the buildings. So I, that's why I would have to go north on this, because I don't think this is a priority versus the roof.
I thought we were, I thought we were doing the roof.
Well, I've reached out and got a different response, um, this CD can, you know, cannot reallocate the funds toward. But my thought process would be looking at a roof in the new budget next year.
Okay, okay.
That's my thought. Um, we will have our kitchen done, hopefully we can get our bathrooms done out of this budget, and then the next budget, we're going to do on the roof on senior.
We, we saved a lot of money on the, uh, kitchen.
We did, an astronomical amount.
To Benny.
Thank you, Benny.
Yeah, big props.
We'll talk about those by them next time.
Sweet, so you think they need them, Eric?
Uh, the picture she sent.
Well, I, but I, I, I I do agree with John that the roof is a priority. Uh, I, I, and I, and I would, and I've, I've actually reiterated that statement, um, two, two meetings ago, I think. Even, uh, trustee Brennan did as well. So the the roof is a priority. Um, however, uh, the one kitchen door uh, does not even latch properly. So it will need either work, uh, you know, for adjustment or otherwise, which, you know, we can have our maintenance vendor at that. Um, and then hold off on this until we get the roof done, but I would like to see those doors, you know, replaced eventually next year.
So do you guys want to look at doing the roof out of this year's budget then? Because this year's budget ends on March thirty first.
So can we dedicate the money for the roof out of this budget? Can we allocate the money and lock it in for the roof?
Yeah, because we're, we're definitely not going to do the roof this year.
Pull it out of our fund, we guys are trying to go back.
We would start.
It's too late, it's too late in the year, really, we don't want.
Well, that's why I was saying, we should maybe do the door this year, and then look at the roof and budget it right in for next year.
That makes sense. And then. Let's do that. Let's do that.
Uh, I, I don't have, I just think that the, I'm a little concerned because we went, we needed a roof, but we got a generator. And we got a generator, we still had a roof, now we got doors. We got a new window, but we didn't get the roof.
We did get the window of the senior center.
Okay, that's what, that's.
We did pay for the generator, but if power goes out, we're obviously, that's a must have, right?
I totally see John's point, and again, I, I was, I was focused on the roof as a priority as well. However, given what you just said about the budget and the funding, uh, and this being more affordable right now, the roof being more affordable as we budget it for next year next. That makes more sense to me, so I'm, I'm going to go with that. We can, we can replace the doors now, we'll focus on the roof, uh, in the next year's budget.
Yeah, and I'm fine with that as well, as long as it's I don't want to see anything else over there when we get a roof. Yeah, no, that I don't mean minor repairs. I mean, majors, you know, we just did the floors. We do everything, you know. And we did some of that out of. The funds uh that she received. But we did all that. We still and out of that, we still didn't get a generator and doors, which we're paying. Now we, general funds paying for it, and we still need a roof. So, so I'm. Okay, all right, yeah, let's go.
Okay, roll call, please.
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Chris?
Yeah.
Stacy?
Yes.
Rachel?
Yes. Motion carried by zero. Okay, master plan booklet, so. Kevin provided us a few quotes. I don't know if um Kevin had recommendations as well. Kevin, would you like to elaborate a little bit for us?
Of the of the three quotes, uh one is the Herald, the UPS store up here in the plaza. And uh Nikki told me that we also have, the township has an accounted office depot. That's why I went with that one. But uh you can see Office Depot is quite uh double of everybody else, pretty much. I personally, I I like the Herald just because he's a different township business. And he's local. Uh UPS guy was real super helpful too in in going through stuff, so I. I guess I I link that up to what they're the UPS, they're both, they're all compatible. Uh the I didn't bring a sample of the index card cover. But it's uh similar to a heavier cover and then paper sandwiched in between. It's spiral bound, so it will lay flat when somebody goes to read it, copy it, uh mark on it, whatever they want to do. You don't have to prop it open. And uh the list that I put out for twenty-five copies is what I requested. And I think I've got twenty-one marked for people because I wanted every elected official to have a copy of our new master plan. I think that's imperative. They know where we're headed for the next five years. Uh as well as the planning people, the ZBA people, uh available at the counter for residents to walk in and look at. It'll be marked counter copy. Uh our building inspector, and I'd like to give uh four of them to these four committee members. The the ladies that worked for months on end putting the plan together. Uh is kind of a thank you gift or whatever, because their names in it, their pictures are in it. And then the leftover ones can be sold to the public if somebody wishes to purchase one.
Would they say like the harder cover?
Yeah, I well, the the harder cover is is like a real heavy uh, it's not a cardboard. It's similar to uh the booklets we get like the MTA. Uh they're not a plastic cover. It's a cardboard cover like, but it's heavier. And they told me it should hold up. They recommended that the cardboard cover, like the the index card cover. For longevity for five years. That way you've got some type of hard cover on the front, the back, and the paper sandwiched in between.
Is that the Herald or the UPS?
Both of them are the same. Both of theirs are the same. The Office Depot one I did without a hard cover. To get it down to where it was at. If I had put a hard cover on it, it would have been even more. I was just amazed at just paper cover, you know, no hard covers. For that kind of price.
Twenty copies, you say, Kevin?
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five. I'll make the motion for the Herald uh hard cover copies, twenty-five copies.
Four hundred and ninety dollars, sixteen nineteen sixty of a book.
I'll second.
I think that's a great idea too, only because if we want more copies, we need to sell Rachel the Herald and that's from the criminal law. Uh roll call, please, Madam Stephanie.
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Stacy?
Yes.
Rachel?
Yes. Motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you. Hey, we are going to move uh to. Our agreement for professional assessing services. Let's start with a motion and we'll open there. Make a motion to accept the agreement for professional assessing services um. Jesse, true it.
I'll second that, so we.
So um just a heads up for the board. Justin just sent me this the other day. This is um what he states as the updated contract. I think there are a couple. Minor things in here Eric had mentioned.
I just like to change the uh. The date. Would uh.
I just wanted to give the board a heads up too that. There's some concerns in here and I haven't got with Jesse to talk about them, but it does say that um. He was supposed to be in the office one day of the tenacity on Wednesdays or a date otherwise agreed upon. Um he was also supposed to make those up and the three D F one, he missed them and there was multiple ones that were never made up for his availability. And I think that was a huge focus point for us when we did bring Jesse on, was to have somebody that was readily available for the public. Um so that is one of my concerns with Jesse moving forward. Um my recommendation would be maybe to um. Carry his contract for a few more months. I don't know if we wanna look at seeking other options in the future, maybe talk to him about these concerns I have first before we do a full year approval on it.
I agree.
Um but that's just kind of one of my conversations.
If you adopted this, I was gonna add that, I would only accept this with him making up that. Because that was in the previous and now it's not, which means he doesn't want to make them up.
That was one of my concerns. And I have not had a moment. I mean, he just sent this to me the other day to even compare that to the term one either.
I think if we were actually, do we do we have to renew it now? Is it run out?
It runs out the end of November, but if we make a motion to accept it, maybe until.
January seventh.
And see if they'll take that.
Because, because I would.
I mean, at least till I have a special thing. I wouldn't see him opposing that, but at least.
Can we?
As I can call a special if there's.
That's what I'm thinking. Maybe we should do knowing. You contact him and see if there's agreement, agreeable to that.
Okay, we'll give him some time to compare.
Then we could do a just a special morning meeting or something, because I think. The consensus is uh is everyone would be comfortable if that agreement was in there. Would you be okay with Jesse?
Yeah, as long as he makes that right.
Would you be okay with that?
Yeah, I just flex world of options.
Oh, I'm I'm not opposed to that. If you could, we could find someone else.
I agree with John and not keeping any pressure yet. Even on the price part, I mean, we've been paying at four thousand three hundred and twenty, and I think we were in a jam too. But I mean, we were paying Marie a quarter of that. He was in the office two to three days too.
Wouldn't you have time to post that?
I I mean, his contract currently runs out the end of November. We'll talk, show them and see.
That's fine, if we have. So.
I wanna have time to talk to Jesse first about his current contract, get some clarification on that. And I wanna, if I need to call a special meeting. Because last year, he ended up working, I think, an additional two months past his contract, who was like fighting for the word. So I had it through the board, so I mean, I don't know.
Yeah, it's no special meetings in November.
So I'll talk to him and see um get some clarification on his current one, give me a minute to compare. And the board members too, if you guys wanna copy of this old one to compare to the new one presented. I don't know. It's a little bit more time to look at that.
What are you gonna do with your motion?
I'll withdraw my motion.
Do you have a table or any other tickets?
Okay, um. And then I'm gonna make a motion to appoint um Stacy, the clerk. As the ultimate to the fire authority. Second, thank you, Chris. All in favor of appointing Stacy Wells as an alternate to the fire authority, please say aye.
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 Where you say aye?
Say no. Motion carried. Stacy can't say.
We have to let's about wait.
Three. Four, one. Motion carried, sorry. Um three public comments, please, three minutes.
Eugene Monso, Louis Roar. I have three things, so if I have to sit down and stand back up, I will. Uh first one is, I must have misunderstood at the last meeting. That the code enforcer's job would have been voted on today. Um I thought it was going into Herald, who was gonna give people time to put in applications. And then it was gonna be voted on today. So that must be my misunderstanding.
Can I can I address that a little bit? You don't want?
It's there's one more week left of the post. Stacy.
We put it as a two weeks, so.
That's okay. So I I I just saw it. I just saw it as it was just gonna be today, I guess, I figured.
You have Harold by Monday, so you.
Okay, we need to get it in the first two weeks. Thank you very much for clearing that up for me. Two is uh back when we had the election, I brought it up outside. So I wanna bring it up here because I haven't seen anything being done about it. But the uh historical building we have here, that cement, that's in front of that is dangerous. There's a foot and a half drop off of that. Uh I think there should. Hmm, no, I'm talking the cement that comes out and then you have the stairs coming down. There's no handles for walking down the stairs and there's no fence around the cement where somebody could stumble off that and fall. I would I would personally like to see something done with that for safety. And um the third thing is, is my job that I have, I drive around a lot. And I don't know why, but all of a sudden I'm looking at different areas uh township. Properties. And I see like Vassar Township and Tuscola. Um I don't know if it's a township or whatever, right, but right there in Tuscola where the the offices. They got beautiful playgrounds for families. And I would really like to see something like that here. Um I don't know if there's some type of a grant money or something that you get periodically or whatever to do something like that. But if you guys would go look at the Fedford Township or the Tuscola and the that and the Vassar Township. It's just absolutely beautiful on what they've done for the playground, picnic areas and stuff like that. Then we would have to go to the Clio Park where there's uh sometimes my wife and I will go sit there, we'll go pick up dinner and we'll go there and sit at the park. And there's just ungodly amount of people there, especially when they're having their concerts. It would just be nice, I think, for the families to just be able to come and play on the stuff here and not have to deal with. A lot of the other uh people that's going to those parks. It's just my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you, Eugene. Any other board comments? Okay, oh.
I'm Stephanie Burway on uh Vienna Road. So I actually wanted to attend the last meeting when the uh community host agreement, the vote of still solar came up. Um I just wanted to note on it that. Uh I just feel like the board should be careful about any of the terms and conditions, like giving up. The uh constitutional rights of members of the community, hasn't heard of that. So my understanding, I'm not a lawyer, but my understanding is the way that probably should have worked was. A negotiation take place prior to it being dropped off. And then at that point, they they would have had something to submit. Um instead, it was sort of something a lateral, which uh isn't my understanding about how things are supposed to work. So it's uh something I think that if ultimately the um solar company is successful and puts this in. Important for the town to see that, because it could do something like the playground. Um but if it's not handled carefully, I know that there is even ways in which it can end up going to other sources. You know, so but the whole point was there was a negotiation that really was supposed to take place. Um prior to to a lot of this process starting. So I'd just say for the board to take careful note of that. Um the other thing that, you know, as far as intervention, congratulations, good job. I'm so glad you guys, yep, good job. Um the I saw that both communities pulled together their resources, which I think, again, is smart. So that gives a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Um I, again, not a lawyer, but my understanding is this isn't just for legal fees. It can be for expert analysis. And just reading through the comments, again, things would have to be checked for credibility, but some people are noting there's like ball needle nests around. And you can hire experts from that money too. So, you know, seems like maybe biologists or something like that to see whether or not. But I would just look carefully at comments and see if there's anything that that's worth supporting. With the the funds that were given to us from P H two thirty-three. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Board member, Mr. Stan.
So I'm saying thank you for coming out. Have a good night. I wanna thank everyone. Yeah, thank you all for coming out this evening. Um I do uh. Uh also, we have a chance day coming up, so just make sure you remember um those who served for us. And um the town this is still a meeting, so please attend if you can come up here or now that you have, the better we are. Um really, I have a last day. That was about all I had, so we may all have a big night.
Good meeting.
Motion carried.
Oh.
Aye. Oh, here's a aye.